Instead of doing normal alphabetical order, which I guess Royce would be first, should we do it reverse? And we'll do it by first name. So Brian, you're first, okay? And Dylan would be second, and then Royce would be third.
That works.
Does that work? So basically, we got 10 minutes for each of you. And what we'll do is, I doubt you're going to talk 10 minutes just about yourself, so once you pause for a second, and I'll give you a five-minute mark if you reach that, then I'll ask you the four questions that are the most common at the beginning, okay? All right?
Brian Weaver.
Brian Weaver. Yes, all right, all good. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, I don't mind if I walk around a bit. I don't want to just stand behind the table. But my name is Brian Weaver, recently retired from the Johns Creek Police Department, second-in-command for the last 17 years. I was born and raised in Anderson, Georgia. And just a little bit about my family and my parents, so we got kids. I had eight sisters and two brothers. So I know what it's like to be at a big table with a lot of people, being in a room with a lot of people, where everybody talking at once. So that's easy for me. But I went to the University of Georgia, graduated in 1980, received my master's in public administration from Columbus State College. I also attended the FBI Academy Quantico for dinner. I'm also a graduate of the GIBI program, which is the Georgia International Law Enforcement Exchange Program, where a group of law enforcement executives go to Israel and learn about their counterterrorism and how to do things over there as opposed to domestic and international I started my law enforcement career in 1982 with Fulton County Police. At that time, St. Adam's was under construction. I remember going over there taking reports, where some of the homes had some building materials stolen from. That was in 1982. I rose up through the ranks, ended up being a major before I retired from Fulton County Police, had various leadership assignments, and I retired in 2008. In 2008, I started here with Johns Creek Police, part of the inaugural squad and the senior command staff. From that point on, we built the department based on the community needs. We were the first and only department that was national and state certified and accredited in their inception. I say that to say this: We knew what the needs of the community were. That's how we built the department. That's what you're supposed to do, and that's what we did. That's why now we are recognized as one of the best police departments in the country. That's how we can keep this city safe. We distance to the citizens, we get the proper training, we know what's necessary to keep this city safe, and our schools safe, and our places of worship. So we do it because we know how to do it. We do it because we did our research, and we do it because we know that's what you guys want to do. Johns Creek is a great place to live, and a lot of people would like to be in Johns Creek with our reputation as being one of the safest cities. I moved in Johns Creek about 18 years ago with my wife, Patricia. We have two sons and three granddaughters. One of our granddaughters is a teen at Shakira Elementary School. I can say that during our time here in Johns Creek, it has been a great experience. I have not only worked with the police department and served this community, I have also worked on my HOA as the president and vice president. So not only did I work diligently with the police department, but also served on my HOA board to deal with the needs of the community and the needs of my subdivision. I can tell you that serving the community and serving the citizens of Johns Creek is in my blood, just part of my DNA. And that's why I want to be a candidate, that's why I am a candidate for the city council. And that's what makes me uniquely qualified for this position. That's what separates me from my opponents here. I've been in the streets, I've been out there for over 37 years, I know what's going on, I know how to get the job done. In police work, every day, we dealt with problem-solving issues. Every day, we had to collaborate, we had to cooperate with other agencies, and we had to handle situations that required de-escalation skills. So that's part of my experience, and that's the experience I want to bring to Johns Creek City Council. The experience of serving, my diligence of service, and my integrity, my professionalism, and my experience. Thank you very much.
With that, so the four common questions, I'll give you the first one. Your position on changing State Road 141 to six lanes?
I have no desire to do that, of course, it takes four months, but I would take that stance now, not based on what's already going on and what the desire of the community here is. That's a lot to take on, and I don't see that happening in that area of the region.
Your proposed options, there's five of them, for the State Bridge and 141 intersection, which one do you prefer?
For State Bridge and Medlock.
Medlock Bridge, Medlock Bridge Road and State Bridge, 141 and State Bridge. There's five options that have been presented.
Yeah.
Do you have one that you like?
There's a couple of them that I would look at, but I would still say the jury's still out, because I don't have all the details. But I know the one, the one I didn't like, I didn't agree with, was the so-called Michigan U-turn or something like that. I didn't think it was a good idea, I think that was a little too much. I think we need to continue to do our homework, continue to get information, to see what other cities are doing, and look at those other proposals and see where they've been used, and if they're being successful enough, before we can implement it.
Third question, your position on stormwater management, particularly with regard to neighborhood retention and detention points?
Well, that's something that, I guess, over the years, you can go back to Fulton County days, when the county was here, I think the county sort of realized, when Johns Creek started talking about being a city, they sort of backed up and took their hands off of doing anything for the future growth or for the future of these neighborhoods and these subdivisions. So what I think now is, we all have to put our heads together and look at what other cities are doing. There are different things out there. I know in Anderson Park County, where I'm from, they've had a stormwater tax or whatever for at least seven, eight years. Other people are doing different things, where you just have a one-time fee, and HOAs are now paying for it that way. We have to look at grants from the state, grants from the county, and grants from the feds. I don't know if we've fully exhausted those revenues or avenues yet, but I think we need to look at all possibilities, because my theory is, sometimes we have them because we ask them. So I think we just got to talk to the right people, and with my experience dealing with county, state, and local and fellow officials, I think I already have bridges built and relationships there where I think I can make a phone call and maybe get some truth and get deeper into what we really need or what our options really are, other than what we have done in the past.
Okay, and the fourth and final question is, the city charter states that the city manager controls the interactions between, or contacts between the council, the mayor council, and staff. Do you think you could be effective following the charter?
Well, let me go back to when the city first started, when the city first started, and I was here doing the inception. The city manager was a strong city manager that really controlled the city. Everything was controlled by the, the city manager, I want to say controlled, I mean, everything went through the city manager as far as the business got done. Had a strong city manager. I think over the years, that sort of watered down, and I think it has a lot to do with the individual personality of that person who's holding that job. The first city manager was military, he believed in chain command, so that's how he operated the city. If someone needed something, they went to him first, before they went to city staff. Now, I think, since the second city manager came in, he did not have a military background, or he did not have that chain command attitude as far as the day-to-day operations, so he operated differently. Now, I think the city council, if there's a ongoing project that they're working on now, and that's being considered by the council, they can go to staff for additional questions and additional information. But if they're not already working on it, they cannot ask staff to do an additional work. So with that in mind, I think it's good to have a strong city manager, and I think we need to close that gap first, to right that opposition as it's ready. So until we get a strong city management, still that position is filled, I think the identity of the day-to-day operation for the city is going to be kind of up in the air.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan, you're up.
Dylan Tanguy. Thank you, I'll go to the same thing like Brian. Thank you, good evening. Thanks for taking time to come to this information session. My name is Billy. I'm a resident of Johns Creek for almost 20 years. I'm here with my wife, Palma, and we have a daughter, Cindy. She's a recent graduate from Chattahoochee High School. She's currently in UGA. My education background, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering and a master's in environmental engineering from Lamore University in Beaumont, Texas. It's about an hour from Houston. After the graduation, I worked in the environmental field for five years up in Houston, Louisiana, looking into designing the landfills, wastewater treatment plants. During the process, I interacted with our local state natural resources department, they used to call them TNRCC back then, and also Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, and also interacted with EPA. So I was pretty good in communicating and getting the stuff down between all the agencies. In 98, I moved to, into the management and executive role, into the information technology and staffing company. I've been a small business owner and executive for almost 21 years now. During that 20 years, I went back to GSU and got an MBA in finance. So in general, I have an experience of civil engineering, environmental engineering, and finance and operations experience. Going back to my hobbies, I'm an outdoor person, I like nature, I'm big into hikes. Earlier part of this year, I came back from hiking Everest Base Camp, Mount Everest Base Camp. And a couple of years back, I did Kilimanjaro, and also we did Montelvert and Grand Canyon. So I do run half marathons and recreational tennis, too. But with this campaign and other stuff, my harmony, as the racket will last probably three months. Hopefully, I can back into that in December. So going back into what I would do for the city, as a nation, I have the experience from engineering all the way up to operations, finance. So before getting there, let me explain like what I did for the community. I recently graduated from Leadership Johnston Program, and I'm a graduate from Citizens Fire Academy and Citizens Police Academy. So during that programs and coursework, we were able to see the other side of the coin. We always look from this side, so I was able to look everything that happens from the other side. Leadership Johnston is what motivated me to run for the post, too. So there's a lot that can be done, so I was debating and came back and said, okay, let me go back and use my skills to do that. I'm also on the board of, construction board, office for Johns Creek. Was, and I was on Chattahoochee High School Governance Council for three years as a budget chair. During the process, I was able to work with Fulton County and the school, and able to get a greenhouse. Initially, the school was thinking of like a small brand, putting like a small shed or warehouse or a greenhouse. But then you realize county had so much funds for the special project that we could go back and ask. We just need to go back and ask, and do a representation for the right reason, we would get the funds. So from $40,000, $50,000, we were able to go back and get more than $300,000 for the school. I'm also on the board for a nonprofit organization called Shelter of Love. It's located for against domestic violence. I've been on that board for last more than two years. We also provide care packages for the victims in the shelter before they really go back and find it, or the accommodations, we do provide that. So I've been on that board as treasurer for last more than two years. I'm intending to continue for as long as I can provide a positive contribution. So now coming back to what I would want to do for the city. Based on my experience on engineering, finance, and environmental aspect, I would like to focus on the three areas. One is going to be economic development. When I say economic development, just going back and reviving the existing ones, like the tech part. We have hundreds of thousands of square feet office space sitting in there, not being really tapped, so won't go back and prioritize and get some jobs into that area. In the process, I'm already talking to a company based out of Florida, who have an incubation center in there. They already have one in Dunwoody, so I'm working with them, just consider, take a look at it, technology box. So once we have the talent pool, we will be able to go back and pop the bigger corporations to at least consider Johnston as their office or head office. The second aspect of that point is going to be the shopping centers. We want to go back and help struggling shopping centers to at least revive. The way it's going to happen is if we don't go back and provide some kind of a helping hand, or at least work with them on a plan, they will go down, and along with them, they would bring the property values down. We don't want that to happen in Johns Creek. So we want those shopping centers to be lively and at least contribute to our positive growth. Now coming back to the second point, getting an identity for Johns Creek. We are an arts and culture city, and we have everything that's needed for a city. We are ranked in all aspects. We want to go back and focus and get an identity, unique identity and a brand for Johns Creek. So during the process, I will go back and focus in and around the city hall and develop a party, arts and culture, or community center, which would be a unique to Johns Creek kind of, add value and put us ahead of, at least, if not ahead, at least compete with the neighboring cities like Alphata, Duluth, and Cumming. So the last one is going to be transportation. If you want to move Johnston in a forward-looking direction, we need to have the projects going on. We don't want to get stuck in the traffic. So in that process, we need to go back and expedite the projects that's already in the pipeline. Just keep them moving. Just get much-needed relief for the residents, expedite, like the projects are already in the pipeline, so let's work on them and keep it moving. Thank you.
Okay. What is your position on changing Route 141, State Road, to six lanes?
That's a question that, we need to work with the city to, oh, patient city, and also the county and the county. We need to align ourselves with their plans. Doing something to that part without working with other neighboring things, it's not going to be productive. We don't want the traffic, even if we do it, we don't want the traffic to be stuck in the middle, not having on either side. So we need to align ourselves with the other cities and the counties and the plan, and when we want to move forward, we need to go back and work with the residents in addressing their concerns. So right now, it is part of the tier one, but I don't see that to be in the pipeline until we go back and align our plans with other neighboring city and county.
The second question, there are five proposed options for the intersection of State Bridge Road and Medlock Bridge Road, 141. Which option do you prefer?
Option two is the one which is economical, and less impact to the neighbor, residential neighborhood, actually no impact to the residential neighborhood, and minimal impact to the businesses. Yes, there's going to be some parting spots gone. Looking from the high up there, that looks to be more lucrative choice, but again, we don't know the complete dynamics. We need to work on that, getting all the information, the neighborhood statistics and the businesses. Once we talk to the businesses and get all the information, then we can make addition. But right now, between all the choices, two looks to be more, but until we dig deep inside, we don't know exactly the pros and cons.
The third question, your position on stormwater management, particularly with regards to neighborhood retention and detention points?
That's a growing problem, that we need to be addressing it. I know we pushed it for too long, it has to be addressed. Right now, city, from the city, we offer in the study. So once the study is done, we would know exactly what is the magnitude of the problem. The city would mainly focus on those six spaces, so we need to go back and address that, then come back into the second aspect of detention and retention points. Yes, city should be, city, county, or state should be addressing that, not really the four monos or relations. But again, until we have that study and know the magnitude of the problem, we wouldn't be able to do that. But again, the city, state, and county should be helping out the HOAs and the residents in this aspect.
The last question, the city charter states that the city manager controls the interaction between the city council and the mayor and city staff. Do you think you could be effective following the charter?
More than us being effective, we should look at like a city staff. We don't want to go back and get their productivity down, so yes, we need to get the information from the city staff, but I would rather prefer to go through one point of contact, because when the city was founded back in 2006, they put the good people, like, came from good people up there, so they are running it. So we want to go back and, yes, we need to get the information, and the productivity of the city staff shouldn't be hindered with so many questions. So if you have a single point of contact, it doesn't have to be a city manager. A city manager is going to come back and say, okay, this is the point of contact. Most of the instances, maybe the point of contact would be able to answer all the questions that the city staff, or I mean, city council has. So rather than reaching out to the city staff directly, I would say that it should go through a single point of contact, and that person might be able to answer the questions or direct it to the right departments and get the answers. Thank you.
Voice running here.
Thanks everyone for coming up. My introduction is going to be a little bit shorter, because you probably, a lot of you probably know me, and I'm probably not in an unknown quantity, because you've seen me at city council meetings for the past 10 years, advocating on behalf of the city. Just in the way of a brief background, my wife and I came to the Johns Creek area in 1979, so we've seen a lot of changes. All good. Johns Creek's a great city, and we love living here, and this is where we're going to be forever. By way of just background, education, things of that nature, I'm a graduate from University of Michigan, and now I'm now working in engineering. I'm also a graduate from MIT in engineering. From, graduating from MIT, my wife and I moved to San Francisco, where I took a job consulting. My background is in the design, engineering, construction of billion-dollar computer plants. So that's my area of expertise and where I work. But I would say that my specialty was really improving the performance, the effectiveness of organizations, and I did that for many years as a consultant. Traveled the entire country, working with practically every utility in this country to help them solve their problems. Because whenever they got into the ditch, they needed somebody to help them pull it up, and to see what needed to be done in their organization. After retiring, I took up an interest, well, I always had an interest in government, but after retiring, I took up an interest in our city government. So for the past 10 years, I've been attending city council meetings, making suggestions, positive suggestions as much as I can, to help guide our city and move it forward. Participated extensively in the development of our comprehensive menus plan, our parks plan, in a number of zoning cases. You may remember the radio tower, the giant 400-foot tower that was going to be next door, and a number of other issues, zoning cases that have come before us. So I've been an advocate for the community, I hope, in a positive manner. So the reason I'm running, just to keep it simple, is I just want to improve the effectiveness of our city organization that's focused on enhancing the quality of our schools, our public safety, and our home values. Because everything we worry about, parks, stormwater, fire station, you know, roads, traffic, business, all ties back to those top priorities. We want to make sure that we keep our focus on being the best city in Georgia, and what makes us the best are those things, our schools, our public safety, and the quality of housing we have, so we can make it better. So those are reasons that I'm running, and if you elect me to serve on council, I hope to provide my expertise a little bit more directly on council than I'm able to do now as a member of the public in terms of pushing. As I see the city, we have a lot on our plate. It used to be, when I first started looking at the city, and my wife ran for city council, it was, we were keeping money in the bank and we weren't doing things. So we advocated for parks and for paved streets. That happened. Now we have a lot on our plate. Now we have the Parks Plan, now we have peace blocks, we have a fire station, now we need to execute on those things. And I sense some sort of frustration, a little bit of frustration in our community that we're not moving forward on those things, and we wonder why that is. And I, as an observer, can see that there's areas that I could help to make that happen, because my background in project management and in senior management of organizations, I could contribute that, so we become more of a forward-looking city. One of the things that I've advocated for many years is having a 10-year plan. We're looking, we currently operate on annual budgets and a very short-term vision, but we have multi-year projects ahead of us. We need to plan how we're going to spend our revenues on more than a one-year, yearly basis. You know, we're not going to solve everything in one year, but we need to have a plan for how we're going to spend our money over a number of years to address our maintenance needs on stormwater, our maintenance needs for everything we're building, all the parks. We can't just build things and forget about the need to spend money to maintain them. So that's things that I advocated for maintenance approvals, that's happening now in our city, but we need to properly fund that. Five minutes, let me go to the question. My objective tonight is not to drone on about myself, I could do that forever, just to answer your question, so let's go to the questions.
Okay, the four questions, the first one, your position on changing State Road 141, Medlock Bridge Road, to six lanes?
It's a long answer to this, but got to bear with me. The problem with 141 is if you three-lane the road, you need the six-lane interchange, the intersections, think about that, okay? My approach of multi-spots projects would be, do we understand what we're trying to do? Has the community been involved in this vision, and is it affordable? At this point, I think the jury is out as to what we're trying to do on 141. We'll plan the way. The plan to widen 141 came from a previous public works department that kept telling us, well, Forsyth is going to widen it to three lanes, Beach Reporters is going to widen it to three lanes, so we need to widen it to three lanes. Well, you know that turned out not to be quite the case. Forsyth isn't thinking of making it into three lanes, Beach Reporters isn't thinking of making it into three lanes. But we may want to add a capacity to 141 that we currently don't have, that I've talked about before council, which is the multimodal solutions to help us get around in the city, and not just use cars all the time. We've talked about sidewalks, we've talked about personal transportation vehicles, scooters, bicycles, all of that, and we need to figure out how we're going to accommodate that in our road network. And so we need to be looking at 141, it used to have bike lanes, I mean, are we going to just turn everything into car lanes and, you know, just do cars? Or are we going to think about solutions beyond cars and how we're going to handle that?
The second question. There are five options for State Bridge Road and Medlock Bridge Road, 141. Which option do you care for?
So I happen to have read the Wolverton report. These five options come out of the Wolverton report, and the quality of that report could be enhanced. Right now, that report is based on what is best for through traffic only. So all the solutions that are being proposed are only considering north-south, east-west traffic. They don't consider the fact that people want to turn right, they want to turn left. So the report as a result is biased towards any solution which takes time away from turning traffic. So if you're going from Medlock Bridge and you want to go to State Bridge, none of those solutions help you. So again, we need to look holistically at this whole thing. If you look at the report, at best, what these things will do is get us a ten percent improvement, and in fact, just to burst the bubble here, we're not going to see an improvement at all, because G-Dot is telling us that we're going to see a degradation, continued degradation, and at best, all this is going to do is mess it, how much worse it's going to get. So don't expect any magic bullets or solutions out of any of these. We're still going to be tied up in traffic, maybe not as bad as it currently is.
Third question. Your position on stormwater management, particularly with regard to neighborhood retention and detention ponds?
We have four major bodies of water sources in Johns Creek, with the state tracks, with Johns Creek, Colley Creek, Long Indian Creek, and the river, Charahouche. They all score four on a scale of up to five, where one is good and five is bad, okay? So we've got fours. That tells us that whatever we're doing right now isn't working, that we could do better. If we really are concerned about the environment and making Johns Creek a better place, we need a whole new approach to stormwater management. And to me, that's making it a much more technical issue driven by hydrologists who understand what we're trying to do in managing water, and not these cookbook solutions that we